Significant changes in the code will include revised regulation for electronic message display signs and restriction regarding garage sale and real estate open house signs to be placed on private property only with permission by the property owner. At this time, I'd like to call anyone to the podium if you'd state your name, address, and your comment. So, Laura?
My name is Laura Gray. I live at Croye View Apartments. The reason I'm here tonight is about the garage sale signs. I've already talked to gentlemen here earlier this year when it was in the paper. And I feel very much against not having garage sale signs. And if they have problems of people leaving them out there, then what they should do, just as a suggestion, is that they get picked up, get the address off of there, and find these people that's not picking up the signs. The city will get the money back into the funds and leave the people have their garage sale signs. My daughter, for one, does it at least four times a year. She pays her bills with this. And I know that a lot of other people, because I've talked to people about it, and I told them I was going to be here tonight about it. I don't feel that they shouldn't take the garage sale signs away from the people that try to make something out of it. If they're having problems with the signs being left out, then yes. Get the address, find the people, put it right up in the paper, and tell them that they will be getting a ticket. And that's my feeling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Sharon Cole, and I also live at Croye View. What Laura said, I agree with, but you're telling us to go to private properties. People aren't going to allow us to put signs on their private property. To be real honest with you, if I owned a house and you came knocking at my door, I certainly would say, "I don't think so." To be honest with you, I agree, and I really feel that the papers are getting sky-high. We had a craft sale, November 5th. We put an ad in the paper. It was this big, forty dollars. Five of us paid for that. We're on, you know, we're on social security. It's really rough. The only way we can, you know, get ahead is with the signs. And I feel that this is kind of unfair, and I just really feel that we need the help, and we're hoping that you will vote in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
I'm Robert McClinsky. I live at 1301 Freer Street in Hudson. I know you want just general comments about the law, the new law, and don't want people coming up here grousing about any one particular sign, but I do want to make a general point about the law, but I do want to talk about one sign as an example to help me make that point. So if you'd just indulge me for a minute. The sign I'm referring to is something you probably have seen in the past, over the last year, as you drive in to Hudson off of Exit 1, go up past the water treatment facility, and then come up to the Dairy Queen. Often, you'd see a sign on Sundays put out by Casanova Liquors that, in this case, this was their first attempt. There was a brown sign, Beer and Liquor, and then a second one behind DQ. This one leaning up against a utility pole. This one leaning up against a no parking sign. Then they upgraded a little bit and had a red sign and a yellow sign that said Beer and Liquor behind Dairy Queen. Then a little while later, they took those signs and they put it on the back of their van and parked the van by the Dairy Queen. And then they upgraded further with a big yellow sign that just says Beer and Liquor behind the Dairy Queen Bud Light. And so, we've had many iterations of that sign over the last year on Sundays. And I took photos of them. The reason I took photos is because I would send those to the city and complain, because I believe that they violated the law, the current law, even before you've changed it. The current law says there will be no sign other than governmental signs erected or temporarily placed with any street right-of-way or upon any public easement. And I'm assuming all of these are in that area, and they're certainly not on Casanova's property because they're around the corner. So, I complained. And the reason I complained, too, is because as I saw those every Sunday as I drove into town, I thought that these signs are not right for Hudson. You expect people, out-of-town people coming into Hudson to look, you know, come in, enjoy the river, eat at the restaurants, shop at the nice downtown, and the very first thing they see as they come in is a big yellow sign that says they can get their beer and their liquor back behind the Dairy Queen. And to me, that just screams out, you know, hillbillies. So I thought, you know, let's get rid of this thing. It violates the law. But, you know, this is over a year, and I complained multiple times, and, you know, the sign never really went away. Every Sunday, it was there. Changed one version to the next, but it never went away. So I don't know if the city wasn't doing anything about my complaints, or maybe they were, but Casanova's was just ignoring them, or maybe paying fines is just considering it a cost of doing business. They can make X thousands of dollars on a Sunday extra by putting out the sign, "What the heck, I'll pay a hundred-dollar fine." I'm not sure. Now, if you look at the new law, I think you've beefed it up quite a bit with respect to this type of a situation. Not only now do you have the same requirement that you can't put these types of homemade signs within the right-of-ways, but it also goes on further to say that, you know, off-premise signs are prohibited. It also says that you cannot lean signs up against utility posts like they were doing. It also says you can't put a sign on the back of a vehicle and park it and use your vehicle as a sign. So I think the key, the point I'm trying to make is, you know, enforcement. It's nice to have a great law and beef it up, but if you're not going to enforce it, why even bother? I mean, here's a situation where I complained multiple times and nothing ever got done. So, it does say in your new law that you, one of the things you can do if there's an unauthorized sign, the city can remove it at the sign owner's expense and dispose of it without notice of the owner of the sign. So there's no reason why you couldn't drive down there on Sunday if you see that, lift it, take it away. Of course, they do lock it with a nice wire to the pole, so you might have to bring a wire cutter, but you could haul it away and get rid of it. So my point being, go ahead, update your law, but let's enforce it, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to talk about the sign? Gordon?
I'm Gordon Knudsen, 901 Gerard Street in Hudson. I'm here representing the Hudson Lions Club and myself as a business owner in the city. I did pass out a flyer that I gave everybody. I just want to go over a couple of concerns on this that I have regarding your sign ordinance. Number one is a special events for nonprofit organizations. The current proposal says you can put a sign out four hours before the event and must be down within a couple hours after the event. And I think Randy Morissette mentioned at the last council meeting that a lot of these nonprofit organizations, they need two, three weeks of advance notice so people can schedule their activities and coordinate with that. So, and they need that for fundraising for these organizations. So my proposal is, under Section 202-2 definitions, add the following as a nonprofit sign. Any sign which is owned or controlled by a nonprofit organization, organized for at least two years, and organized within the City of Hudson or having a future event within the City of Hudson. Basically, I put the two-year in there so you don't have a lot of organization, nonprofit organizations that start up, do a fundraiser, and then they disappear within a few months, a few weeks, or whatever. That's why I put the two-years in there. It's up to the council if you want to make an adjustment to that timeframe or whatever. Also, in Section 202.4B, 1, nonprofit signs may be allowed in the public right-of-way providing they do not interfere with traffic and/or traffic flow as determined by the city. Now, this would be up to the police department. If you notice, the last several weeks, the last couple of weeks, there've been signs from the Craft Sale at the Hudson High School on public right-of-way. Bethel Church had their Scandinavian Fest signs on the public right-of-way along Crestview Drive. St. Pat's had some signs out. The Lions Club had signs out. And the Lions Club puts them in the city, North Hudson, the townships, and other areas around the communities so we can advertise our pancake breakfast, our Rib Fest, and other special events we have. And the only place to put those would be on a public right-of-way so people can see them. And I think they should be available, that should be available for nonprofit signs so they could do that, but the city would have control on whether or not the sign is intrusive on traffic flow or whatever. Also, the signs can be put up at least three weeks before the event and removed no later than one day after the following of the end of the event. So initially, it was four hours for a sign to be put up before the event, and I believe Lori passed it last time to go to 48 hours. So, and I think the council went along with that change. But I'd like to see that going back to whatever you want to do on the initial time, but allow nonprofit signs to go up at least three weeks ahead of time. The second concern I have is regarding Section A, excuse me, I missed part of it here, regarding the zoning ordinances within different districts. I personally live in R1, R2 district right now, and I have a sign attached to my house advertising my business. That, according to the current code, it says the sign shall be a freestanding sign, which means that I cannot have it on my building because it shall be a freestanding sign in a R1, R2 business residential district. In a multiple residential district, it's different where you can have a freestanding sign or a sign attached to the building. So I think the homeowner should have an option of either a freestanding sign or a sign on the building in R1, R2 areas. That's my comments.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Hi, I'm Andrea Jorgensen with the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. And on behalf of the Hudson Chamber, I'd like to talk a little bit also, as this gentleman just mentioned, about the nonprofit organizations who run special events. And as you know, we just hosted the Christmas Tour of Homes. If you're familiar with that event, we have to put several, several directional signs out amongst the community for the busing application that brings the tour buses around to tour the five homes in the Octagon House for that two-day weekend event. It would be an operational nightmare to have to get permission every year from the private home, or from the private owners of the different areas that we would have to put signs out on. That event changes every single year, and it would be very challenging to try to make that happen. And I would request the consideration of a possible special events permit or something that we could file for, for such events that would maybe consider these types of events that would take place. And also, as he mentioned, it is a real challenge to run an event such as that and then have four hours to remove those signs, especially in the evening. That particular event runs till five on a Saturday and four on a Sunday, which is getting dark. And to have volunteers go around and take down those signs would be an additional safety hazard that you may wish to consider. Those are a few of my comments, but I would really welcome some consideration for these events that we currently run. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Hello, I'm Mike Rasmussen, and I am the owner of the Dolce Restaurant on 106 Buckeye in Hudson. And one comment I'd like to have is, I do currently put a directional sign on private property. Well, it's owned by the State of Wisconsin. I have talked to the people that are in the building of the State of Wisconsin, and they don't mind the sign being there. And it simply has the restaurant name and an arrow. My concern about this is numerous customers that I've had say that they cannot find the restaurant because Buckeye Street is one block long, and when you drive up to the stoplight and look up at the street sign, the street sign says the street name for the street going up the hill, not Buckeye. And if you're coming down First Street, there are no street signs at all. So I've had numerous customers talk to me and complain about not being able to find the restaurant, having tried before, and not being able to find it. So I'm just wondering about considerations for directional signs in the case where a short street like that doesn't show up on a lot of the mapping software and is hard to find. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the sign, proposed sign ordinance? Is there a motion to close our public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to call up Troop 213, please. They're going to help us with the pledge of allegiance tonight. So, gentlemen, if you could come up here and lead us in the pledge. Come on right up here, yep? Who's going to lead us on? All right, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mayor Virchell?
Here.
District 1, Morissette?
Here.
District 2, Yacke?
Here.
District 3, Bernard?
Here.
District 4, Wyland?
Here.
District 5, O'Malley?
Here.
At this point in the agenda, we'll call any citizen that would like to speak to the council on items that are not on the agenda. Now is the time to come forward and speak. Come on up. Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, William McManus. Can you hear me? William McManus, 802 Ninth Street. Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, I just have a brief statement I'd like to read here. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. I know the time is short, so I'll get right to it. I'm here to urge the immediate repeal of Ordinance Number 12-10 requiring off-street parking during a snow emergency. While I think most residents of this town would have no argument with the intention of the ordinance, its practicality, especially in the older residential areas, is deeply questionable, and its requirements are deeply flawed. In essence, those of us without off-street parking, or inadequate off-street parking, are being singled out and asked to apply to the city for a permit to park outside our own homes. More on this in a moment. Since most of these requests have not been granted, and since we do not have any other parking area, many of us have had to park on the boulevard or in our yards. This will, of course, not be practical and will damage our properties. On Friday night, this past Friday, at nine o'clock, after it was obvious to all that a plowing event was occurring, I drove around in an area roughly bounded by St. Croy to the north and Vine to the south, Fourth Street to the west, and 11th Street to the east. In this small area, I counted no less than 28 vehicles parked on boulevards and lawns. There may have been many more. I did not count any vehicles that appeared to be in long-term storage, of which there were many, nor any that were anywhere near what might be regarded as a driveway or other parking area. It doesn't take much foresight to see that this will not work even in the short term. My wife and I are lucky enough to have two full-size four-wheel-drive vehicles, and in six inches of snow, I was able, just barely, to put them both on the boulevard off of Fox Street to our south, which I'm reasonably certain is not a legal parking place. I don't know what we would have done if we had had regular two-wheel-drive sedan or pickup. If this winter goes as most do, this will not be possible, even with our four-wheel-drive vehicles, after one or two more similar snowfalls. So we will all be forced, faced with having to park on the street in violation of the ordinance. We applied, as did many of our neighbors, for a, quote, "vehicle exemption" under the ordinance so that we might legally park on the street, our property having, our property in particular, having no off-street parking. This was mysteriously denied. In reading the ordinance, I have not seen where it grants wide-ranging dictatorial powers to the Office of Public Works, but this is the way Mr. Zulie of that office is reading his brief. He has decided that he is in a position now to require residents to make alterations to their property according to what he decides is best use, and is basing his issuing of parking permits on compliance. He told me last week that out of, on the telephone, that he told me last week that out of hundreds of requests for parking permits, he had granted only less than five. I don't recall the exact number, but it was less than five. I can tell you that this has created real tension and hard feelings, and not just for me. What some of my neighbors have said, I would not repeat here. The changes to private property which Mr. Zulie has, I think fairly outrageously, insisted that I and others make are not within his purview, and in my case, would cost many thousands of dollars to complete, a sum of money which I do not have and will not have. And I know many of my neighbors are in exactly the same position. One neighbor, who has a small, single tuck-under garage, not large enough for any of his family vehicles, and used for storage only for several years, was apparently told that he would be required to clean that out and somehow fit three other of his family vehicles, full-size vehicles, sideways on an apron area approximately 12 by 14 feet in the alley. This ordinance unfairly singles out those of us in older or less expensive homes, asking us to do things that are not required of other residents in places where off-street parking is available, who would be parking in their garages or driveways under most circumstances anyway. I think it very unlikely this kind of unequal treatment would be sustained by a challenge in court. Now, you can see I'm a little worked up here. The simple solution to this mess is clear. Return to the odd-even system of winter parking, which is in use almost everywhere, or modify it slightly so that it only applies during a snow emergency. I don't know why it was abandoned, and I think most residents would be happy to return to it. I would suggest that the parking day begin at 9:00 a.m. and extend 24 hours to the next 9:00 a.m., so that 9:00 a.m. on the 10th would mean all cars are to be parked in the even side by then, and 9:00 a.m. on the 11th, they should be moved to the odd side, and so on. Certainly, the last couple of years have been a little chaotic regarding snow removal, and something should be done. But this ordinance and its unfairness, and unfortunate opportunity for abuse of power, is absolutely not the solution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on an item not on the agenda? All right. Let's move on to consent, agenda items.
To approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of November 22, 2010, and the special meeting minutes of November 29, 2010. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $291,111.90. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of three regular operator licenses for the period December 7, 2010, to June 30, 2012. Additional information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To place on file the quarterly report of the Parks and Public Works Director and the Community Access Board minutes of November 30, 2010. That is all.
Did you already pull a police department squad car request?
Yes.
Moves approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, roll call vote, excuse me.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yacke?
Yes.
Now, let's move on to the finance area. First order of business is to consider ordering two police department squad cars for delivery in 2011. Marty, are you here?
Not twice. As you can see in your packets, we did get three bids for squad cars, one from Ewald Ford out of Connaughtawak, Hudson Ford, and Anderson Ford out of Baldwin. If you take a look at the quotes, the lowest one was from Anderson Ford out of Baldwin for $43,148.48, which is approximately $430 less than the closest second bid. So that's why the recommendation was to take from Anderson Ford.
Okay, discussion.
I have a question. How much money would we save or not save if we're sending three drivers up there to pick up our squad? Overtime, drive time?
Well, we would probably using officers on, that would be working, probably Sergeant Hartman, myself, Lieutenant Larson would go, and we're talking 20-minute drive time down, approximately half hour, 40 minutes, finish out paperwork, and then another 20 minutes of drive time back.
I guess my thought is, if we can save the $400 in time, why don't we just approve the Hudson Ford?
Marty, would all services have to take place in Baldwin?
No. We have bought from Anderson Ford in the past, but we've never used them for service. We've always done service locally.
I guess I have a general question about our procurement policy, and we don't require sealed bids, correct?
Not for, I think it's, no, that's getting quotes for equipment.
Are there any situations where we get sealed bids?
Yeah, public construction, public, but not for equipment and where it's required by state law.
Well, I'll take a crack. I'm making a motion to approve that we do the Hudson Ford bid for the 43578, recognizing the savings of $430 of our officers' time.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it for the sake of discussion.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the amount of paperwork, whether we go to Hudson Ford or Anderson Ford, is identical. So the difference is the drive time, and even if you add the drive time up of three officers, it's not going to equal 400 and some odd dollars.
I'm not sure exactly how much. It depends on what officers you send. Obviously, we wouldn't be bringing anybody in overtime to go up and get the squad cars.
Because we still have to, we still have to follow the state law that says if we have the lowest bid, unless there's a discerning difference, we need to take the lowest bid.
There's no discerning difference, is there?
Well, I mean, we're under our procurement policy, not state law. They have state law, it only applies to public work-type construction. But under the procurement policy, you're supposed to take, if you do a bidding process, take the lowest responsible bid. Typically, favoring local businesses is not an appropriate basis for taking a different... No, I know that. I'm just kind of telling you the guidelines. That was the reason, I assume, behind Mr. Wyland's question regarding how much money is it going to cost to go up and pick up the car?
Yeah.
It's not a regular service issue because service won't be done in Baldwin.
Marty, the police officers would go there one time to take possession of the cars, correct?
At Anderson Ford?
Yeah.
Yes.
If it were Anderson Ford, there's one trip to Baldwin.
Correct. One trip to Baldwin, one trip back.
And then servicing takes place locally after that.
Can I say something?
Sure, certainly.
So, kind of piggybacking on what Randy and Lee are both saying, if we were to consider Hudson Mercury, finance, the special finance mean before we worked on our budget, you said oil changes were like $25 a pop that we spend on an oil change?
Yeah, 20, just under $25.
That's what I recall, right? So we have probably three oil changes for each one of those cars, right? 12,000 miles is what Hudson Ford is offering us the first year, first 12 months or 12,000 miles. Obviously, you're going to catch 12,000 miles before the first year comes up, so I assume that's three oil changes per car, and that's two cars, so that's $150 of savings.
Excuse me. The, this information came in after the bid deadline, so I don't know if that...
We can't dis... What? Got it?
I don't know.
I assume you set a deadline for the whole bidding process?
Correct. It was set in for last week, was when we got the bids, and this stuff that you see in front of you is the new items. I got that today.
Oh, so we can't even talk about it? Or can't consider it? We're thinking about...
I mean, this is subject to the city's policy. You want to have a fair process, and the bids need to be made on specifications. Were any of those items in the specifications, and did other people...
They were using the same specifications. And maybe if I can clear this up a little bit for you, Mary. When I called Dan Anderson back from Hudson Ford to talk about it, what... When I called Dan Anderson back from Hudson Ford to talk about what the bid sheet was, I told him that his original price was lower than the price that he had bid us the second time, and he wasn't aware of that. He wanted to go with the lower bid to forget about the paperwork he sent us today.
Okay, so, am I not...
Yeah.
Can I not talk about this? So we're not considering the oil changes and the service and all of that? Okay, well, then, takes care of my thoughts.
Say that again, Marty.
The paperwork you have in front of you is what we got today. If you take a look at the price on the back of the page there, it's $100 more than their original bid. If I asked him if that's what he wanted to go with, and he's, when I told him what the difference was, he goes, "No, I don't want, I want to go with the lower price."
But was he referencing, he wasn't referencing the service offers?
Did other people put in service offers? Was that even part of...
The paperwork you have in front of you is what we got from, other than I do have some more paperwork from Ewald Ford, if you want to have that 26-page document. What was asked for was just the bidding process for the squad. This is specs on the squad. Pursuit interceptor with the seat packages, the spotlight, and the car door, the back door is disabled, and the light and the inside disabled. That was it. Certain color.
It sounds like you do your service all in town anyway, simply for the convenience and cost savings associated with that.
Right, I wasn't referencing that we would be doing our service out in Baldwin. I was just referencing that there's cost savings through purchasing it. It could be a wash, like Randy was trying to get to, that possibly it's a wash with the amount of time it takes for our officers to go out there, with the cost savings that Hudson Mercury was offering us on oil changes, even for a short period of times. It could have been a wash, is all I was referencing.
Scott, any comments?
I agree with Lee. I think we have to face the fact that it's not going to cost 400-plus dollars to send officers one time to pick up the vehicles. The cost savings based on an apples-to-apples basis does not argue completely for Hudson Ford, unfortunately.
Lee, anything else?
I think we have a low bid, and we should accept it.
Lori? Mary?
No.
Randy, anything else?
No.
We have a motion to accept the bid from Hudson Ford, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails.
Move to accept the bid from Anderson Ford.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, four to one. Thank you. Item five, I believe Chuck has left. Scott, do you want to bring this forward from Public Works?
Happy to, Mr. Mayor. Essentially, the contour maps, the topo maps, topographical maps that we thought that Chuck Swartz from B.R.A. thought were available are not all available. It's an incomplete collection, and to get them all printed out for us and into their system, which we really need in order to do this feasibility study, because we have to know the condition of the land out there, it's going to cost an additional bit of money. Now, we're still not getting up to the original $17,675 that was budgeted for this project, but we will be going above the $15,000, which was not part of the motion, but was an indication of something wanted by the previous mayor. So we would be going above that $15,000, $16,886. So the staff recommendation is to approve the addition, additional expense. We believe now it will stay at $16,886, so we're saying not to go above $16,900, and I will so move.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, the agreement between the City of Hudson, St. Croix EMS, and Credit Management Control, Inc., for the Tax Refund Interception Program, or TRIP, Intercept Program. Catherine, do you want to just give us a quick...
Sure.
...knaps on it?
The agreement you have on the table is the one that is up for approval. I did ask them to put in a specific provision on termination, and they did that. Basically, this is kind of the last step in the line of collections on the EMS billing collections. First goes EMS billing, then it goes to AmeriCollect to do collection procedures after that, and final spot is Credit Management Control. They are authorized and have experience in dealing with the TRIP, Tax Refund Intercept Program, through the Department of Revenue, and so that's the reason for this agreement. Both Eric and I believe Devin think it's more cost-effective to have this agency do that rather than do the TRIP in-house.
Vote for approval.
Any other discussion?
There's none of that funny business stuff in this contract?
No. 30-day notice of termination.
I think you added that, didn't you?
Yep.
This is a really unfunny contract.
Lee, you had something you wanted to...
I was just going to mention the same thing that I financed. We discussed the fact that it has a very clean termination notice, which I appreciate you putting in there. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business. Update on the fire contracts and consider waiver, consider a waiver of attorney for conflict, potential conflict of interest. I think everyone received on their desk tonight, and we kind of apologize for the amount of paper that you received, but we wanted to get you all the information that we've been working on last week, and Catherine and Lee have spent a lot of time trying to get this thing put together. I think you're all aware that we had agreed, if we couldn't get an agreement, we would go with last year's contract, and I believe we have a contract that we want to take a look at right now, that we're waiting for our partners to, they're having a meeting next week, or this week?
This week. Tuesday and Thursday.
Villages tonight and Thursday for the towns.
I think so.
Tonight and tomorrow night.
Yeah. So if they approve it, then we have an opportunity to approve it, but Catherine, do you want to...
Sure.
Mary, Lee? Catherine, why don't you start us off?
Yeah, why don't you pull out the proposed, it's 2011 Town of Hudson, City of Hudson. Well, I guess you have one for each of the municipalities...
Yeah, we do.
...on the 10-year term, and what happened was Fire Board, some of the municipalities on there were concerned primarily about spreading costs of large capital assets, over $1 million over a 10-year term. That may be something that would just be too hard within their budgets. And so, the Fire Board considered that and added the provision in paragraph five whereby capital purchases over $1 million could be spread over a period of not to exceed 20 years. If you see that underlined portion, the 20 years is the max, maximum, I guess, for most bond issues. Devin provided that. So that if they were in a situation where they needed to be spread over more than 10 years, the contract authorizes that. It would still be subject to council approval, but I think the idea was to give this accommodation to the participating municipalities, because they're most likely needed in those situations. Kind of in the discussion, it was, we realized that this rolling 10-year period and notice of withdrawal didn't cover, okay, just to back up, under this rolling 10-year period, if a municipality wants to withdraw, they must give a notice of withdrawal, and then they still must complete the 10 years. There may be purchases of assets after that notice of withdrawal, and the previous contract had been set up so that they were only obliged to pay off their, any capital account balance prior existing, prior to their notice of withdrawal, yet they're required to continue for nine, the remaining nine years. So we addressed that, saying that they will pay their pro-rata share, and really, what could happen is that if they have a low capital, you know, it just depends on what assets have been purchased. If they give, if they only have a few years left on their capital account, maybe they would pay that off and be able to withdraw, and they would only pay their pro-rata share of capital assets purchased after the notice of withdrawal up to the time they actually withdraw. Is everyone understanding that? It gets a little complicated because of the rolling term, and it's unknown right now what anybody's account balance will be. But everybody realized that, hey, if they're staying in and continuing to receive services on maybe a new capital asset that is purchased after notice of withdrawal, they need to pay for that, and they, that's the underlying portion towards the end of paragraph five.
And that was the trade-off that we're making to change the fee calculation.
And then lastly, paragraph eight, they were very concerned about possible land purchase, and we put in the provision, or land and/or building, that payment terms applicable to the municipalities would be negotiated at that time under a separate agreement. This does not keep the city from going forward with any sort of purchase, but the city will need to talk with the member municipalities and get an agreement from them prior, or addressing payment terms if there's going to be purchase of land and buildings.
And if we don't get that agreement?
Well, then, they, I mean, the city provides the service, so there may be, well, a couple of things. You may decide, well, then we just purchase a land and building sufficient to serve our own, our own city. If they, if you have equipment that's necessary just to serve member municipalities, that will be something that needs to be addressed at that time, and there will be a, probably a trade-off in service opportunities for them.
One of the things we talked about at the Fire Board is the fact that if we do acquire land, it's going to be to the benefit of our partners, maybe more than the benefit of the residents of City of Hudson. So they would prob, well, who knows what would go on at that time, but they would be benefiting, they would serve their needs greater than ours at that time, and I guess they want at least input in if we decide we're going to do something like that. Lee?
Well, exactly. Like, if we extend our services, it's not going to be for the city proper. It's going to be to support additional services outside the city. So, from that aspect, we thought, you know, this is very acceptable, because we'll be talking with one of the towns to say, "We're going to expand our services in your area. They're going to want to participate in that new building and land, and if they don't, we don't need to expand our services in the area."
Well, that's the point. I don't want to hinder our forward progress if they decide they don't want to participate in that.
And this will not...
Well, you can absolutely move, buy something necessary to serve the city, but you may, if, you'll want to talk with the member municipalities, because if they're not able or willing, you know, whatever, to pay at that point, then you would consider what you're purchasing and what you're building, and you'd do it only to serve whatever the needs of the city are.
Consider this an operational agreement.
Your sense is that they'll be okay?
Well, this is an operational agreement for providing service. If we decide to add capital assets, we look at it under a separate agreement.
And when we have to pay out the capital assets if they backed out of the contract?
If they agree on the front end, they have to...
Yeah. No, we have a binding agreement under the, for the land...
Okay.
...building purchase.
My thought is, you know, I don't know what your pleasure is tonight, but, you know, since you guys, you people have just received it today, maybe we can, I don't know, wait till the 20th unless you want to approve it tonight? If you feel comfortable.
I think that's, I think that is fine, because then by that time, you'll know, waiting, you'll know whether the member municipalities or the other municipalities have approved it.
It's up to you folks, however you want to do it.
I would like to wait for two reasons. One, that Catherine just illustrated, to wait to see what the other side of the fence says. Also, I've got to believe that not dealing with the purchase of land and having a clearly laid-out plan how that would be done with our partner municipalities is just kicking the can down the road, and it's going to be a problem later on. I think it should be dealt with at the outset. If you're going to buy new capital equipment, fire trucks, emergency trucks, you've got to, you've got to house them, and to say later on, "Well, this truck is not for you, it's just for us," it's just going to lead to problems, because then you're really violating the spirit of the agreement, which is a mutual aid pact here, essentially is what it is. I think that this is an issue that needs to be better thought out before we sign anything. Otherwise, it's just going to be a larger problem later on.
I, I mean, that's, I don't necessarily disagree with that. I, my thought, I mean, and that's up to you folks. There is the backup plan, as you know, that if this can't be negotiated before the end of the year, the contracts in effect through 2010 will go, a new contract for 2011 under those terms, under the old fee structure, equalized value terms would go into effect.
Which we've already signed and approved.
Which you've already approved.
But they have to come up with a new plan by June 30th of next year, right?
Well, that's the, yeah, that's the language I put in reflecting that this was, this has been negotiated, and that's the goal. And I, I mean, I think you should take the time you need, because it's...
What changes would you like to make, Scott? Or is there anything in that, item eight is what's a stickler for you?
Well, I, yeah, I think this can take more, more thought and more discretion than we could possibly come up with tonight.
Okay.
Because, as you said, we've just received this.
Yep.
But there has to be some way of getting all four partners, or all the partners, all four of them, to agree that they're growing, and in some cases, they're growing more quickly than we are. They have more land than we do, and we are going to need to service them, which will call for more equipment, which has to be housed. And if we're the only people paying for that housing, there's an inequality there that has to be addressed now, before it becomes a huge problem later on.
Anyone else? Lori?
But, I mean, this agreement is not saying that. It's just saying it will be negotiated under a separate contract. And I guess what I'm wondering is, is there any reason we can't at least get this 10-year provision in place with the modification to the charges and deal with that issue separately? I agree with you, it's big, but I'm wondering if it's...
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with you. It's just that I heard the phrase "at that time" a couple of times. Well, what's the time? I think the time's now.
I, I...
Well, we could get this in place and then have language saying you'll continue to negotiate on, you know, by June 30th on the land and building aspect of it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Because, and that you recognize the need that that needs to be addressed.
Just so everybody understands that we're going to be talking about this in the near future.
So would you strike eight then, or keep it in there as with a condition?
I would, I would put some kind of language in that you agree to continue to negotiate that.
You want to do that, and then we'll talk about it in the next meeting.
Yeah, I think it needs to come back. I mean, I don't want to do it on the fly.
Lee, do you have any comment?
Well, one of the things we talked about at the Fire Board, and I think we've talked about a number of times here, is that, and I don't disagree with you, I think that, you know, having a plan ahead of time is a good plan. We also know that in the current situation, it will be a long time before we look at purchasing additional capital assets and additional buildings. Getting an agreement here that says that our partners are going to stay with us for more than a year is laying the groundwork to provide the future.
Absolutely.
So I still think that this should go forward.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we just make some modifications to item eight to refer to the fact that we're going to continue negotiating and talking about a future purchase of land and capital, but that we bring this back. And then we just look at the updated version at that time.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion purposes, again, this particular agreement is that our partners, two of them tonight, and, or one tonight and two on Thursday.
They'll all be by the end of this week. So by the end of this week, the indication from the board was, it was very positive that this will be approved by the end of the week as it's written. If we make modifications...
Want to communicate with them?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, they're meeting tonight on it, and...
Now, there's, this does not preclude us from immediately starting to negotiate a capital agreement. There's nothing that says tonight, "We can't approve this," and direct Catherine to start drafting a capital agreement.
Now, will you send this to them to approve?
Yes, this is our consent.
To review.
Yeah, the fireboard-
We don't approve it, then they're going to be, okay, well, now what's going on?
Correct.
Well, if they, if they approve it with section eight in there and we say, that's great, but we want to hold off on section eight, which I don't disagree with what you're saying. I completely agree with you.
It's just a logistical issue.
Concerned about perception, the perception of us holding off after we've-
I would, I don't see any reason why we, we couldn't wait until the 20th, because what it would do is if they came back with, with, we really like it, but our board has a couple modifications, we could then be the last signers and accept those modifications or review the modifications.
And it may be that people need a special meeting. I mean, some of these other municipalities might have to.
But they don't meet again in the month of December.
That's true, until January.
And we, we, January 14th is, wasn't that kind of our drop dead date?
We, we put a, we put a stipulation here that says the agreements have to be signed by January 14th, otherwise they would-
It wasn't in the agreement, but it was in the cover-
In our cover letter.
Yep.
And then if, if they weren't signed by January 14th, then we go with, today is what's currently been signed. So I think that Lori's motion on the table right now is to approve it with modified language for eight, correct?
Yeah. So I think we can do that, and, but we do need to notify the other municipalities that this is the city's concern and would still like to have it done by January, whatever the date was.
Fourteenth.
But until that time, the 2011 contract will be under-
We honor it.
The, the current fee structure.
And as Lee said, we may have many or some additional changes brought onto us on the 20th by the other municipalities.
Sure. Where would you like that to go? The, this section eight, do you want?
Section eight.
I mean, all right, we're just going to wait until the 20th and say, now we're, we've got all the, how do you want to hammer it out? Do you want to get it done?
Well, I'm happy to meet with one or two of the council members to discuss it. We can't get a, I mean, we don't have any terms on the table or-
So we still may hear what they have to say. There's no substantial changes.
If we're going to make any changes to section eight, point eight, I would say-
Paragraph.
Paragraph eight, thank you. It would be just as simple as, and enter into, and begin negotiating, begin negotiating capital asset agreement in the event that capital assets are purchased. So we have a, an agreement on the table.
Scott, is that what you were looking at?
No.
I don't think so.
No. I don't want, I, I don't want to disagree with you, but I, I think that there are some steps to go through here, which, one of which is, we recognize there's an issue we have here internally. We don't know what the issues are going to be with the other three partners, and I think we ought to hear about them, and then work out all the issues.
So we send it back to public safety? Would that be a place to put it? I mean, it's-
No.
What do you want?
I think that's fair.
What do you mean, on Thursday?
Well, Catherine said she didn't want to craft something on the fly, which indicates she might want to craft something that she can pull back into her den and gnaw on a little bit.
Well, I'd be happy to talk with you or as to what you're looking for.
Sure, and Lee's our representative for the fire advisory.
Yeah, so I think that makes sense.
We should table it to the 30th or the 20th meeting.
Yeah, don't, don't table it.
That's what Lori's motion was. Go.
Yeah. Bring it back on the 20th, Lori's motion.
All in favor of, of the motion? Do you want to read that back? So, so everybody knows what we're talking about. Good.
To make modifications in paragraph eight and refer to the fact that there will be ongoing negotiations regarding capital asset agreement, and to bring back to council at the meeting on the 20th of December.
Is that clear? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Motion carries. We have one other item.
I need approval, well, you need to consider giving me approval, I should say, for a waiver of conflict of interest. Gwen Koschever in our office represents the town of Troy, and so that we've got a conflict of interest, I can't continue to represent the city on this, on the contract with Troy while she represents the town of Troy unless you waive that conflict of interest. And I need to, you've got a document before you which goes through the various issues. The main thing in my view is that what you need to understand is primarily, at least until now, this has been negotiated and put together by the fireboard, the members working together primarily, including the city representatives and the Troy representatives and the representatives of the other municipalities. So I have not, and neither has Ms. Koschever, been in the position of negotiating the agreement with the exception of a couple suggestions such as the capital assets that are purchased after someone gives a notice of withdrawal. But clearly, the intent here in the spirit is, everybody wants to come up with a agreement that is fair and shares costs fairly. That's the goal, and that's what the fireboard has been working toward. Having said that, if, if you approve this conflict, you also need to underst-, conflict waiver, you need to understand that neither Gwen nor I can serve as an advocate for, we can't tell you this is un, seems unfair to us, or something like that. We, it pretty much has to come from the fireboard and the member municipalities, so that, and which it has so far. I mean, I, I did participate in a meeting with Mayor Burchill and Lee Wyland and the chair of the town of Troy. That seemed to be the goal. But if there's any sort of conflicting interests, we have to be out, both myself and Ms. Koschever. So-
Given what we just talked about on section eight, you couldn't defend us for that point, then?
Well, what I would say is, that's an issue that needs to be addressed, and, you know, it's coming up sooner rather than later, and we need some certainty here. That would be my goal, just as we did with the rest of the agreement. But, and it could explain the city's situation, but I couldn't, I can't be in an adverse negotiating situation with another lawyer in my firm.
I think at this point, it's been more of a, taking the information that Lee has provided and, and getting it down into an agreement. I don't think she's been representing us as a negotiator at this point.
No.
I think we can decide for ourselves whether or not something's fair or unfair.
Yep.
And how well do you get along with Gwen?
Very well.
Well-
Well, maybe that's-
She's looked at this as well. And it will have to be, it would have to be approved by the town of Troy. And if at any point you're not comfortable, or if it does appear that there's a conflict in that land purchase paragraph, certainly will, I mean, we will notify you. It's our obligation to say, this is not a good situation, we're out.
Well, I will move for approval of the, of the consent and waiver.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's move into new business. First order of business is to amend municipal code, chapter 202, sign regulation ordinance 17 dash 10.
Senator, we appreciate the comments of the public during our public hearing process. Basically, there's five items that the public brought forward, enforcement, garage sale, sign, nonprofit organizational signs for special events, off-premise directional signs, and home occupation signs. Kathy and I have had several conversations the last two weeks since the public hearing notice went in, and the draft sign ordinance has been published on the city webpage and also available by call or email through our office. I took probably five or six phone calls or email questions, responded to them quickly. Basically, one, one or two had to do with the nonprofit organizational considerations. So I, I knew that was going to be an issue for tonight. I knew that home occupation permits would be, or signs would be an issue for tonight. I've settled along during this process, garage sale signs, if not allowed on the public right-of-way, would be an issue. So none of these issues are surprising to us. I would request that the common council have first reading tonight and allow the city attorney and I to address some of these issues and bring back recommendations to you in January to give us enough time to be able to put together our recommendations in regards to these five or six issues, and then consider the sign ordinance adoption after January 1st. Of course, as I relate to you and my issue sheet, if we would do that, we need to extend the moratorium on electronic signs. So from that standpoint, you know, I, I'm, I'm not wanting to ignore any of these issues that were brought forward. Enforcement has always been understood. Once this ordinance is adopted, we're aggressively enforcing it. It's no layback, you know, kind of see what's going on with the sign ordinance, it will be affect, will be aggressively enforced. Something also in enforcement, I would like the common council to consider, it's been brought up by a couple older persons for holders of liquor licenses. Somehow can we tie it to enforcement with sign regulations, try to beef that consideration up a little bit? So that might be something else, maybe not necessarily in the sign ordinance, but in, in issuance of liquor licenses, try to beef that section of it up. There also needs to be the definition of pornographic sign, which Kathy provided the definition to, that needs to be incorporated. There's a couple of minor formatting considerations that still need to be done, moving the B3 central business regulations back in the business section. Also, there's a provision for projecting signs that's a little bit hard to find. We need to reinsert that back in the central business district so it can be more easily addressed. So I'd certainly like to discuss any of the issues that were brought forward in the public hearing tonight, but I really think probably our best way to move forward, making sure we get an ordinance that we're happy with, I'm not sure we're going to be able to satisfy all the issues that the public's brought forward. And a couple of those have to do with content neutrality in this ordinance, it's tough to write an ordinance and be content neutral. And, and that's a, that's based on court case. The second issue is, court cases have ruled that if you allow signs in public right-of-ways, you allow all kinds of signs. And that's some, that was a difficult issue for the plan commission to deal with. So, you know, we do one another, I think we err on the side that we take the signs out of the right-of-way versus allowing all kinds of signs in the right-of-ways from a public aesthetic standpoint. So those are the issues I would recommend from my position, that you have first reading or do not act on it, act on the moratorium ordinance, let Kathy and I bring back recommendations. Kathy may want to address the two issues of content neutrality and also the public right-of-way sign from a legality standpoint.
It's your pleasure, counsel. Go ahead.
Well, I agree with Denny, it's a very, I mean, the, the law does require the sign ordinance to be content neutral. We're trying to regulate signs based on time, place, manner, size, type restrictions, where they're located, that sort of thing. Government just cannot regulate based on message. And the one proposal about nonprofit signs, that's kind, that's regulating based on speaker. And the courts have found that to be essentially a speech regulation, because you're favoring one speaker, one type of speaker over another. So the goal of any sign ordinance is to try to minimize any type of content regulations. And I'm happy to look into ways to maybe better address the temporary special event signs. The whole point of that section of the ordinance was to get away from having separate regulations for garage sales, and separate regulations for open houses and real estate signs, and separate regulations for grand opening signs. Basically, a laundry list of regulations based on the message contained in that sign. And we can't please everyone, but I'm certainly, I understand the, the difficulties. There's limitations on what the city can do. That's just the reality of it. We tried to get as close as we can. I have concerns about the, you know, nonprofit singling out that as, I have concerns that it will be a content restriction, but I'm certainly happy to look into it. The other topic that I think was very important to the plan commission was the prohibition on off-premise advertising. And the longer, temporary signs right now are the only signs in the ordinance that these temporary special event signs essentially allow off-premise advertising, but only because it's temporary, tied to a specific event. The longer you lengthen the period for a temporary sign, the more it starts looking like permanent off-premise advertising, and then it kind of undermines the validity of that prohibition, which I think from the plan commission's point of view was very important, because they are trying to avoid the proliferation of signs and the aesthetic and visual clutter that involves. So that's, I mean, this whole ordinance is basically, not the whole ordinance, but especially within the temporary sign category is a balancing act, trying to achieve these policies that the, that are important to the city. Public right-of-way is similar. That's got two very important purposes, which are necessary to support the validity of the ordinance, is traffic safety, and again, aesthetics, visual clutter. And because the city cannot regulate based on content, once you have, you know, allow signs in the right-of-way, you're allowing any type of sign, not based on content. And that's what's resulted in the various intersections full of lots of signs. And I think that's what the plan commission was trying to address. So those are the difficulties. And Denny's right, we're happy to look at ways to try to improve it, but there will be limitations on what the city can do. And you also just need to remember that this is an area of litigation, it's speech control, and also advertising is very important to people. And so the city just needs to be very careful in how it fashions its ordinance.
I will move for first reading of 1710 to allow Catherine time to come back with the items she just mentioned.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Bring up some other-
Yes, absolutely. Lori?
Were you going to mention anything else?
I haven't said anything further.
Okay. Just a couple of questions and comments. The, the current electronic signs that are out there, I'm assuming they would be required to conform to the new-
Catherine and I have discussed, I think we need to finalize our opinion. I think yes, the answer is yes.
Yeah.
They will be required to conform.
Okay. And then one of the comments that was made tonight about home-based businesses, and that it requires those signs be freestanding, I guess I would like to allow that.
Yeah. Yeah, we agree on that.
Catherine and I talked about that prior to the hearing.
I think some people would actually prefer that.
Mm-hmm.
But I understand that this ordinance allows for home-based businesses to have a sign up to six square feet.
Um, well, it's not just home-based businesses, it's not-
No, but it can be, right.
Yeah, it's, again, we're trying to get away from, I think it's in any residential area.
Okay.
But we absolutely agree that it doesn't have to be a freestanding. That was just a-
Okay.
And that's six square feet could be an item that could be discussed. It could be four square feet.
Okay.
Or five square feet.
And then the other comment that was made about signs not being required to be taken down four hours after the event, I think 24 hours is reasonable, and it provides for daylight and safety.
Okay.
Those were the only comments that I, I guess I wanted to draw attention to.
Randy?
I agree with Lori, as long as you, you folks will actually look and take the time, and obviously will, for the garage sale signs, for the nonprofits. I know it's a juggling act.
The reality is, the city is very lim, I mean, I don't want to, I'm not promising I'm going to be able to fix it to people's liking. I'm not promising I'm going to be able to fix it to people's liking.
I am not going to support an ordinance that is gonna somehow hamper the nonprofits and the private citizens from trying to make a buck. I won't, I won't sign off on that. So hopefully, you can come up with something. Okay?
I should have been more clear with my comment on when signs can be taken down. I was referring to special events, and I like the idea, I guess, of a special event permit. When there's a specific activity going on, and, and a group comes to the city and says, here's our plan, here's where the signs will be. That's what I was referring to. I wasn't talking about garage sale signs, per se.
I was saying.
Because I thought that's a separate issue altogether.
But I also want to.
Well, they're included in special event garage sales.
So. Right.
Okay. Anything else, Lori, on that?
No.
Okay. Mary?
So garage sale, okay. I know I've read this, but there's just a lot being discussed tonight. I just want, I want, like, verbal clarification. So garage sale signs are included in special events. However, they're not allowed in the right-of-way because if you allow one, you have to allow all in the right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
And we can't, there's, there's, the problem with making an exception is speaker, the.
Well, you're basically, yeah, regulating based on the message in the sign.
Well, as currently proposed, is garage sale signs would be permitted. They could be allowed up to forty-eight hours prior to the garage event, starting, has to be taken down four hours after, and they could be up to six square feet. But they have to go to the private property owner and ask permission to have them placed on the private property. We're not prohibiting them altogether. We're just controlling that they are not, will not be allowed in the public right-of-way.
So is there a confusion with public right-of-way and private property in some aspects? I mean, for an example, a popular corner would be Buffalo, a corner where Buffalo Wild Wings is, is popular. Technically, that's private property, right? If, if you get permission from the owner of that property to put a garage sale sign, you can have a sign there.
What's a setback?
Well, that's.
Well, that, that issue was specifically addressed this fall with political signs. There was some question where the political signs are placed on public or private right-of-way. You know, I reviewed, I, for the most part, I can tell by going out and viewing where the public right-of-way is, is simply because I've been here long enough. I know most, almost every corner in the city of Hudson. Certainly not every individual knows where their property lines at. From an enforcement standpoint, would I try to give the benefit of the doubt where it's one foot in or one foot out of the public? Oh, absolutely. We're, you know. But if it's, if there's a question, if there's, if they're out on the curb.
Right.
They're up.
Right.
I mean, if we adopt this ordinance, they're going to be pulled. Simple as that.
About ten feet off the curb.
So, so what's.
Well, I mean, that, and Randy, I mean, basically, what I would do if it's, if it's a question, and I, I maybe try to go knock on the door and say, you know, can you move your sign back two foot? Or can you move it back three feet? And we're not gonna, you know, it'd take, enforcement sometimes takes a certain amount of common sense to try to really do it correctly and not be stepping on everybody's toes during the process. There's gonna be an educational factor if we adopt it as is proposed. Some of us may be working in the newspaper, some of us getting graphics on the webpage, you know, those types of things. Certainly, education's a big process of trying to get this ordinance enforced to the degree that we need to have it enforced.
As I view this, this is a balance between clutter and giving people the right to have their information out.
Right.
So that's our job, trying to make that determination. I think there's people that would say, we don't want any of that stuff in the right-of-way. And I feel pretty strongly about the right-of-way, that we don't want to clutter our right-of-ways for safety reasons, and I sure don't want to see a bunch of political signs. South Carolina allows it in the right-of-way. It's a mess at election times.
Well.
I, you know, honestly, I've heard as many comments from people saying, keep them out of the right-of-way, as I've had allow them in the right-of-way.
Yep.
So I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a one-sided issue. I mean, there's, there's people, even though they may not spoke tonight at the public hearing, there are people who are saying to me, we don't want those signs out there. We don't want twenty signs on a corner during the weekend, so.
And if I might, Denny, you had mentioned earlier that, you know, there's issues when signs are placed in the right-of-way and we're plowing, where there's signs in the right-of-way and we're in charge of mowing in that area. I mean, it's public right-of-way for a reason. In many cases, the city takes care of those areas, and I think, like you said, it is a balance, but.
Well, for example, for example, we had to pull signs out of downtown Hudson today because they were out in the snow, right at curb level. Our, our maintenance crew is going through there tonight, cleaning up curbs, cleaning up sidewalks. Those signs go in that, in that plow shredder, and disable our equipment for whatever period of time. We can't finish our job downtown. So I mean, you know, there's reasons why those signs don't belong out there. And particularly during the wintertime, you just can't pull them in the snowbanks, and otherwise, they get piled in and so forth. I mean, we'll be cleaning up the rest of them tonight or tomorrow, getting any of those signs that have now been put out on the right-of-ways where it could affect our snow piling.
Yeah, I was, I was just trying to clarify that the perception of public right-of-way is not what, I mean, is not necessarily the, the business on the corner. It's, that's privately owned, and you can get permission from that business owner, and it can still be in plain view of the public, yet not be in public right-of-way is what, is what I'm saying, is that I think there is a perception that public right-of-way is anywhere in the city that's not private property, such as a home or an apartment building, you know, that, you know.
But that's true downtown. I mean, in the, in the, in this neighborhood, it is mostly all residential.
Right, I understand that. I understand that, too.
Lee?
Although it's the, certainly can create a brand-new business in town renting out corners, I guess, you know, wanna, because people on, on the high, high buck corners will certainly be renting out space.
Under two oh two dash seven four, the temporary on-premise signs, I'd like to see a longer timeframe for them to have it up. You know, three weeks was, I thought, a good suggestion.
I did have.
I think what Catherine's saying is, it's too long, becomes.
On-premise.
On-premise he's talking about.
Oh, on-premise?
Tempover, yeah, the temporary special event sign.
So A four, right now, it's.
You've got one week.
Well, that allows them eighteen weeks out of fifty-two, instead of six weeks out of fifty-two.
Because they're allowed six.
Yeah.
My, my original comment, though, was, we started into this whole process looking at electronic signs, and we had problems with the intensity on electronic signs, and the people having the trailer that went around, and how we want to do that. And somehow, we went from there to legal discussions about freedom of speech and all this kind of stuff, which I, I, you know, having a little trouble getting from, how do we take care of the luminance problems on flashing electronic signs, to we're going to eliminate every sign in the city of Hudson that's on a private right-of-way. I don't, having a little hard time making that jump.
Part of the problem.
Can I, can I introduce that, or answer that question?
Sure.
I introduced an ordinance that would have taken care of the electronic signs, and common council said, I don't want to adopt it until we go back and comprehensively address the sign ordinance. So it was you as a group that brought us to this point, so.
We did.
Any other discussion?
And I didn't, didn't agree with it at that time either.
That was before me.
We have a motion to approve first reading and a second. And is there any other discussion that you'd like to talk about?
I tend to agree with the, the speakers that spoke today, that do we really have a big enough problem here to go to this kind of an extreme to solve? And I'll leave it at that for our next discussion.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, signified by Saint Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading is complete. Item B, amendment, amend to the Municipal Code, Chapter fifty-nine, i.e. city officers' residency requirements, ordinance eighteen dash ten. Basically, we're addressing our city assessor, which we no longer have a city assessor, so.
And building inspector.
Building inspector.
Also.
Oh, go ahead. Denny, you want to update us on that?
Essentially, yeah. I mean, it really comes back to the fact that our statutory assignment of assessor will now be a contractual, or contractual consideration in the city of Hudson. So I went through the city code, just tried to look at different sections where, as long as we're making this change, try to clean up the municipal code. Two, I did confer with Catherine about this. She and I discussed it, and her recommendation was to make these two changes. One is, under the term of office, currently says, all such officers shall be appointed in definite terms. She's suggesting to address the contractual situation, to add, accept as, or may be otherwise provided by contract, as offered under Wisconsin law. The second one is residency requirement. We've had the assessor building inspector position, the staff personnel is required to reside in the school district as condition of improvement. I guess I, you know, there's like six or seven individuals or physicians that are required to be residents. I just don't see the need, basically, to have physicians now under my overall supervision, and also Devin's supervision, to require that as, have residency in school district. I don't see that as really being necessary.
Move to suspend the rules so that we may adopt eighteen ten tonight.
Second. Real call, I believe.
Morset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Move to approve ordinance eighteen dash ten.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, the only reason this, this was on the books to begin with was to make sure that the interest of those people that were making decisions lived in the city and had to abide by the rules that they were making decisions on. Isn't that correct, the original purpose of this?
About two years ago, it was expanded to the Hudson School District. And I think the concern at that time was the ability to.
Attract.
Attract and retain. Because it used to be strictly the city.
I mean, our city assessor hasn't resided in the city of Hudson or school district in thirty-five years, so.
Daniel Richmond.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Denny, as long as you're up there, I think we need to consider extending the temporary moratorium on electric display signs until ordinance nineteen dash ten.
I, we've gone through this two or three times. Pretty self-explanatory. You do need to suspend the rules if you want to adopt tonight.
So moved.
Is there a second? Real call.
Morset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would just get a move to adopt ordinance nineteen dash ten.
Second.
This will extend the moratorium till March thirty.
March thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. It gives us three months after January first to finish it up.
Any discussion by the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last one to consider, ordinance twenty dash ten, require building numbers. Denny?
Now, Kathy and I were reviewing the sign ordinance. One of the chapters or sections of the sign ordinance was a requirement for building numbers. Catherine and I discussed that we really think that that ought to be placed in the building code versus the sign ordinance, and are recommending that you repeal the section. And the sign ordinance is dealing with building, or building number requirements, and put it into the building code in our new section at the end. Basically, the wording is essentially identical, except for parent three, I added to the sentence, single family residents shall be identified with numbers which are minimum of three inches in height. I added and two families, so the sentence now reads, single family, two-family residents shall be identified with numbers which are, are a minimum of three inches in height. And parent eight had a, a sentence that was inclusive as far as being in conformance of that as of nineteen ninety-five. Now, you know, that doesn't pertain now to, to the numbering system. If, you should be in conformance with the numbering system now going into this adoption, so that's a sentence that's not necessary.
There's a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Real call, please.
Morset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Move to approve ordinance numbered twenty dash ten.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The motion to go into a closed session pursuant to nineteen dash eight, or point eight-five Wisconsin statute to confer with legal counsel regarding strategy to be adopted in the pending litigation in St. Croix County Circuit Court regarding the Robert Kovanarcheck property located eight seventeen Third Street, Hudson.
Did you want to do that till the end?
I guess we can do that, too. That, please, the council, we'll just hold that till the end so that we can go through and finish this out. Communication, is there anything? Oh, I think that's it. Communication from the mayor. We had a thank-you note from St. Croix County Historical Society, thanking for the money they received recently. You're able to look at that. We know that. We each got a memo on that, so I don't have anything else. Is there any comments? Well, I have one other thing. I would like to extend that our local merchants would sure appreciate any shopping for the holiday season. Our local merchants, and I think if we can shop locally, that's a great thing to be able to do. Anything from any other alderperson? City attorney?
No.
City administrator?
Real briefly, we've been getting phone calls about the property tax bills. They will be out before Christmas. I mean, that's about all we can promise at the moment.
Merry Christmas.
Some people want to get them paid before the end of the year. We are getting phone calls down here. The information from the state that's required to be put on the tax bills came out about ten days later this year than normal, so all municipalities are behind. We're just finishing up with special assessments, which we hope to have done by the end of the week. But I'm just, I know that sounds bad, but.
Still trying to get them out.
We are getting phone calls, wondering where they are. So we will have them out. Everybody stands before Christmas.
People want them?
Yes.
Yes, they do.
Thank you. Anything else?
Move to go into a closed session.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Morset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Motion.
All I want for Christmas is my new tax bill.
Nice.